My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello and good evening, everybody. Microphone is working well? Flip the page here. Okay, report of the chairman. Diane, if you shoot me an email, I'll get you this, so you don't have to write all this down. I'll get you a copy of it, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with BoE policy 9130, in January of this year, I formed the Ad hoc District Wide Master Plan Selection Committee for the purpose of selecting an architectural firm to perform the facilities study. The committee performed that function, selected a firm, and that work is in progress. Therefore, with the function of the committee having been completed, I am dissolving that committee. In accordance with BoE policy 9130, I am forming a 2024-2025 Ad hoc District Wide Master Plan Facilities Committee. Easy for me to say. The purpose of this committee is to work with the architectural firm on issues to complete the study, seek input from the community as to the needs of the Monroe School District, and to make final recommendations to the BoE on a path forward regarding the school buildings, fields, and the associated costs involved. I'll be working with the superintendent as far as the makeup of that committee, and would ask any board members that want to be on that committee to please let me know. We're going to make sure that the entire community is well represented without too many people being on the committee. The meetings of this committee will be posted and open to the public, and upon receiving the final recommendations from this committee, the full board will then consider which projects to place in our capital plan and request those approvals from the proper town boards. So just everybody, you know, if we get it, we're getting the reports from the facilities study. When that study is in January, February of next year, then this master committee will really get to work, drill down on the final recommendations to give us as a board, and then us as a board will have to go to the town and say, "We would like to do this." And the proper boards will decide whether that goes or not, town meeting, it'll be capital plan and all that. So a lot of work to do. It's going to take some time. So that's the gist of that. So dissolving one committee, forming another, so that we can move forward. Anyone here for public participation?
Nobody had something.
Okay, moving forward, consent agenda. Any board members have any questions on the minutes of the last meeting? Any board members have any questions on the warrants or wire transfers? There was a bunch?
I already asked and almost answered.
Go ahead.
Well, it's just, it looks like transportation is running, for specials, running about 120 grand. Just make sure that that's not a trend in its accumulation of multiple bills, you know, so.
Yeah, so I think it was probably purchase orders being put in.
It's purchase orders being put in, we're encumbering, and we just put in all of our invoices. All of our invoices for All-Star, so that's why you're saying those numbers still.
Okay, so I don't have to pass out because it's a monthly fee?
Not yet.
Just checking. Thank you.
Not yet. Any questions on the budget transfers? Joe, we have a hire?
We do. We're happy to welcome Cindy Phillips as our special education teacher at Stetson Elementary School. This is a position that Jen mentioned in a previous, I think her last monthly update. We had to open a half-time position where we had been asking special education teachers at Massey to come down after school hours to cover, which we just couldn't feasibly do any longer. One of the current teachers that was there actually moved into the .5 position, wanted that for life reasons, and Cindy's backfilling that full-time position that opened up as a result. So we're happy to have Cindy with us. Actually, she hasn't started a position yet.
I see.
Good to see you hiring Hofstra grads. Thank you very much.
There you go.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, second. Christine, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, aye. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the reports of the committees, and we'll start with our students. Hello, go right ahead.
Good evening. I can't believe it's finally my turn to say this, but I hope you're all having a marvelous Monday. As we get deeper into the school year, I know students are feeling the stress and excitement of all the events happening at Massey. Firstly, we want to commend our newly elected freshman class officers. We can't wait to work with them throughout the year. Massey students are also getting really excited for the homecoming game on Friday, October 25th. It's a pink-out against Bethel, and we encourage everyone to come out, show their pride, and support breast cancer awareness. Additionally, the homecoming dance is the evening of Saturday, October 26th, and will be held in the gymnasium. Students are already prepping their proposals and buying their dresses, and this will be a great few weeks for school spirit. Spirit Week is right around the corner. Student Gov has been working hard on this year's themes. On Monday, we're starting with Slumber Party. Tuesday is Dress Your Age Day, so seniors will be senior citizens, juniors, adults, sophomores, kids, and freshmen babies. Wednesday is Colors Day, and Thursday is each grade's individual theme, and of course, Friday is Massey Colors.
I have our sports report for the evening. So in Massey football, we had a recent win against New Canaan, 14 to 0, and a recent loss against Pinellas. We have an upcoming game against New Wilford on Friday. In boys soccer, we had a recent tie against Pinellas, and an upcoming game against New Fairfield and Brookfield this week. In field hockey, we have a game tonight against Joel Barlow, and a game upcoming against Bethel. In girls soccer, we had a recent win against Pinellas, a loss against Notre Dame, and we have a game tomorrow against New Fairfield. In girls volleyball, we have upcoming games against Brookfield and Stratford High later this week. And in boys golf, we have recent wins over Notre Dame and Joel Barlow, and they secured a playoff spot upcoming this week. And in girls swim, they had a recent meet win against Pinellas and an upcoming meet against Trumbull on Friday.
Any questions for our student reps?
Thanks.
No? Thank you very much. Any board members have any committee reports at all? No? Okay, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Joe, take it away.
You got it. I just wanted to share, it's October 1st, so we've gotten our October 1 enrollment in the other day. At first glance, the... At first glance, when you look at kind of the macro look at our attendance, I'm sorry, at our enrollment for this year, you won't see a huge change from last year. It's what I did on this sheet right here, and this is linked on the agendas as well. This is our total enrollment, all students. This includes, obviously, all of our students in our schools, as well as our students that are in outplace schools, state-reported outplace schools, and even some of the ones that we have to transport to other schools like Attic Tech or Trumbull, Trumbull, Blowag and whatnot. So if you look at the numbers, at first glance, they look somewhat unremarkable. You know, here, I'll just kind of... Let me get them both on the same page, if I can. The total there is 3416 this year, K through 12, where we are at 3454 last year. This is at the end of the school, at the end of the school year. So we have about a little less than 40 students less, K through, total K through 12. And when you look at the total population, which now includes pre-K, we're about a little bit more than 55, 57 students. So you'll see, the next page is a lot, it's a lot easier to see what's kind of going on here. You know, basically, 1 through 12, you're going to see, the numbers are pretty stable from last year to this year. But when you look at it by school, it kind of tells a little bit different story, and this is at least that's... Gives me a little bit of a odd, you know. So what I have on this page here, and you've seen this before, usually every October 1, I bring this pictorial up. Basically, what I have here is I have Monroe Elementary on 10-1 last year, on the last day of school last year, and then here's 10-1 this year. So what you'll see is our enrollment at Monroe Elementary is actually, we're actually up five kids, okay? Monroe Elementary is one of the ones that's a little bit different. The other two are down, but easily explainable. We have 82 kids right now. There's big numbers to look at for everything. Everything is, like I said, it's pretty unremarkable, except for the kindergarten number, the kindergarten numbers, and right now, the pre-K numbers, and we know that pre-K changes over the course of the year. So remember, last year at this time, pre-K had 77 kids. That's a number that only grows because kids age into the pre-K program. So by the end of the school year, we had 101 kids in our pre-K program. Right now, we're at 82 kids. We'll probably end up, you know, somewhere close to that 100 number, again, 100, 105, somewhere in that look. If you look at grades 1 through 5, they're very, you know, pretty similar. What you'll notice, though, is the kindergarten numbers are lower this year, and this is, I talked about this last year, and this just, it just makes sense. We have, we had a number of kids that filled out the waiver. We don't know how many people didn't fill out the waiver, though. Remember, the kindergarten cutoff this year, you know, excluded kids that normally would have come in that were born September, October, November, and December, so four months of kids are somewhat not included. I don't want to say totally not included, because we had about 45 people go through the waiver process, about 40 people that did send their kids to kindergarten, but I'm sure there's a lot of kids that didn't go. So when I look at this number of kindergartners right now, you know, 43 compared to 52 last year, you know, it's down nine, but we're missing four months of kids. And you'll see the same thing at Fawn Hollow. And the same thing at Stetson. So whereas Fawn Hollow is down, 18 kids total, if you look at kindergarten alone, it's down 6 plus 8, 17. So 23 kids just in kindergarten last year. So if you look at this first grade class from, that were kindergarten last year, they had 123 kids. We have 94 this year. Again, we lost those four months. So the numbers are all pretty stable everywhere else, except for those kindergarten, which I think makes up the difference right now from where we are. I'm really, really, really nervous about, and I knew we'd get a little bit of rest that, of what kindergarten is going to bring this upcoming year, knowing where our schools are. We've talked about, and I know we've walked, now that you have walked the buildings, how tight it is, especially at Fawn Hollow and Stetson. I think, you know, we're going to have the demographer here at the next meeting. He's going to talk about things. I think it's not surprising, because we know what's going on in the town. The two areas that seem to be getting hit the most are the Fawn Hollow and Stetson district. So Stetson, you see the exact same thing. 75 kids in kindergarten this year, you know, 95 at this time last year, 97 at the end of the school year. So, you know, again, four months of kids. So, you know, where we're down is in those kindergarten classes. Everything else is up. Those classes are eventually going to start to push into the middle school at some point, those bigger classes that we're seeing, especially, you know, at Fawn Hollow, where we have these, these two waves of, you know, we had these two groups of six sections. Good chance we're probably going to get six again next year there. Same thing at Stetson. We had that group of five, that's the first grade now, is a good chance we're back to five again next year. We're really going to have to talk about, really quickly start talking about space again. So that's the, to me, that's the big story here, because everything else is pretty stable. All of our 1 through 5 numbers are pretty stable. The pre-K numbers are relatively stable. When you look at the middle school and the high school, you know, pretty stable for now, but those kids are going to come up. So you look at Jackie Hollow, 765 now, compared to 759 at this point last year. Massey, 1059 now, compared to 1067. And once again, Jackie Hollow and Massey, much easier to schedule those kids because of the different permutation of classes and whatnot. So just something for us to keep around. So, you know, in kids, actually, in our schools right now, 34, 31, compared to 34, 55 last year, it's only 24 kids difference, and again, you keep going back to those four months.
Joe, two questions. Will the demographer have access to this updated data?
So the reason why he's coming October 21st is he wanted to use the October 1.
The second question is, do you feel like, because we're missing out on that October, November, December, that it'll almost be like a catch-up next year, where you'll get an influx of the kindergartners that missed out this year, next year?
Yeah. Plus, we're going to, so we're going to pick up, we're going to pick up like 16 months of kids.
Right, so it's not just a catch-up, it's a catch-up plus, so it's going to be like 120 to 125. 125 at the first school and 100 for the other, if you're extrapolating it out.
But don't you, but won't those same kids next year, from September to December, they can't go to kindergarten, right?
Those kids cannot.
Right, so you're not adding those plus? Like, why, why do you anticipate so?
No, you're right, you're right. We're picking up 12, we're picking up 12 months of kids, as opposed to eight months.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And is the waivers, can you have the waiver next year, or is the waiver just for the first year of this?
The, so right now, we have a kindergarten meeting, kindergarten meeting set up. I forget when it is. To talk about how we're going to, I mean, we were very generous with the waiver process last year, and the thought behind that was, this thing got pushed on everybody, so especially families.
Right.
And so people had no way, daycares weren't able to accommodate families, whatever. So, you know, our waiver process was, you know, we went through an assessment. We gave the families, brought the kids in, the kids took an assessment. We got information from the kids' preschool teachers, we got information from the parents. Then our team sat down with the families and said, "Hey, this is where your kid might, you know, might do well. This is where they might struggle," but ultimately, we left the decision up to the families to make that. I don't know if we'll do that exactly.
So your numbers may not be as bad next year, or not as high next year, right? Because if you don't do the way, if you don't allow as many kids in on the waiver.
Well, if we don't, if we don't allow as many kids in.
Plus, I mean, again, you don't, yeah, you may have this four months of that, but you're, next year, it's the same, it's the same thing. That you're never, it's not like it's going away. You're not, you're never going to capture this September to December. And you probably have more than that. You probably have July and August kids now that are kind of like your November, December, that you're holding off. So you really, I think you have more of a six-month of kids.
Oh, six months instead of eight months?
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe.
Because, you know, August is your new December.
I like your optimism.
One less also. Cool. You're working as always.
Just, just want to, any other questions on the October 1 numbers? I think the, I'm sure this will be all part of, I know it's part of the demographer's conversation at the next meeting. This is in, this is in your agenda. I just put out the, I can't believe we're doing this, but there's like two or three months a year where we don't have to think about budget. I don't know if that's everything case. Because just when we start to not have, you know, after the budget's passed, we start closing out all our POs from the previous year. But we just put up the, Ron and I put together the budget calendar for next year, so it's there for everyone. I know one of the things that's been, I think, you know, very well received, especially I know from the administrative team, is the, having the liaisons. I have the list of what everybody did last year. I remember last year, the conversation, "All right, just move everybody down one or up one or whatever." Are we comfortable with doing that this year, or just wherever it falls, it falls?
Yeah, it's fine.
Make it easy.
So this is our, this is our time, this is our submission timeline, so we have an admin meeting with the principals on Thursday, and we'll be giving out the instructions, and we'll be starting to meet with the principals and directors early November. I just wanted to bring up the press box, which Ron kind of laughs at every time I talk about it. I'm like, this is just a big shed. I don't know what's taking so long. But after a very lengthy process with the help of Antonozzi and Associates, we were able to get the bid, the bid and the specifications out on September 16th. Proposals are due back this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. We'll start opening the bids shortly after. I know Christine has reached out, and thank you, Christine, to offer to participate in the bid selection process. We'll be setting up that meeting shortly, and we will have someone from Antonozzi Associates there, because they're going to be helping us make a recommendation. I mean, obviously, we wanted to go to the lowest, you know, lowest, most qualified bidder, but if there's a particular firm out there that is the lowest, most qua, the lowest, but not necessarily the most qualified, we have heard a couple of horror stories in neighboring towns of people starting work and not finishing work and stuff like that. So we'll definitely rely on their expertise for that. Jen, do you want to do the special update?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Okay, so month of September, when we look at our enrollment, we had three students that moved into district. We had one student that was dismissed from services, and five students who were made eligible, which brings our total number to 616. If we look at our financials, at this point, we've pretty much encumbered all of our known expenses. We do have three other students who we are looking for outplacements, and they do have some complex needs. So Morris and I are working on those right now. In the next couple of months, we're going to see an increase in, most likely, in tuition private while we look for those placements. The only other line of no is really our other professional occupational therapy line. We're overspent by $35,000. That's because we had to add extra hours onto our occupa, one of our occupational therapists, because we have so many students, so many more students that weren't budgeted for, who need direct occupational therapy in the elementary levels. So the three different buildings. That's really it for right now. Yep.
Given the lack of, given that CES doesn't have an audiologist, who you, how are you guys handling that?
We use a private audiologist for some things. It's very rare that we need one, but...
Oh, okay, you don't use them.
No, very, it's very rare, and if we do, we use a private audiologist that we've had luck with out of Southbury. Somebody else?
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll also be looking for a volunteer to sit on the calendar committee. Last year, the calendar committee met, created the master school calendar for '24, '25, and '25, '26, this year and next year. We thought, rather than wait until next year to create the calendar for the next two years, we thought it better to start scheduling our calendar committee every year, so we're creating a calendar two years out. So they'll just meet to create a '26, '27 calendar toward, you know, that year out. But this way, we'll always, you know, families, staff, we'll always have a two-year preview, and then the calendar committee's going to meet. So that usually meets, we're not in as much of a rush this time, so probably January, February, or so, because Sheila runs that. So we'll be looking for a volunteer for that. And then just the final volunteers we're looking for is, it's negotiation time for three of our party units whose agreements have expired, the nurses, custodians, and paraeducators. So once again, I anticipate that starting probably in early January. Once we get kind of through the crux of the budget, we'll probably meet with those folks. So I'll put that out there. I'd like to sit on any of those negotiations. Much appreciated.
Joe, nurses, paras, and custodians? Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Okay, moving right along to unfinished business. We have a second review of the policies that we looked at our last meeting. There were a few of them. Anyone have any questions on any of those? No, then can I have a motion to approve the above policies as presented? Dennis, second by Justin. Any further discussion? No, hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Move on to new business. Joe, Mike is going to talk about a teacher evaluation plan.
Yeah, Mike's going to come up. Every year, it's part of, I think it's state statute, that the, each board of education has to approve the teacher evaluation plan for the, for the district, a teacher and leader evaluation plan for the district. So Mike will just walk us through that, and he's led the, he's led that group in the district.
Good evening, everyone. This is a continuation of some updates that the legislature had given to us a year ago. This time last year, I was presenting to you sort of a new teacher evaluation plan, and it was built out of new legislation that had already gone forth, but a state sometimes happens, went forth too late for them to put into effect for last school year, but we were allowed to pilot it. But it actually went into effect for all districts this July. There are legislative changes that put in a lot more tiers of support. You'll notice that in the plan. I had to put our plan in front of the state during the month of August to get approval from the state, and we got immediate approval for our plan from the state. It's really a reflection of all the work the PDEC committee has been doing over the last two years. This whole process has been a group of about 15 teachers, administrators, paraeducators from each grade level that really worked together to build this plan. Where the last plan that the state came up with, which was, I think, 15 years ago, 14 years ago, was extremely prescribed by the state. There are definitely non-negotiables for this because of the legislation, but also they allowed districts to say, "What works well for you? What's going to move your district forward and your teaching forward for where you are?" So we have adjusted our documents. Our PDEC committee met in September, oh, no, excuse me, well, we met in September, but we approved this TVAL plan at the end of last year, because we knew that the state was going to ask us for it over the summer. So now, the last step is to have the Board of Ed approve it. We had a couple of documents guide our work. It was the NIASK standards, which, you know, although we talk about it as often as a high school NIASK, actually, NIASK standards are pre-K 12, but we have to look at accreditation for the high school part of it. But we use those as our standards. And also for our teaching and our coaching of teachers, we looked at the Danielson framework for teaching, which is the CCT, which is, you know, the Connecticut Core of Teaching, is actually built out of the Danielson framework. So we utilize the Danielson framework as the basis of our work here. There are different areas of teacher evaluation. Those have not changed, and the first being about goals. And every year, we have teachers are setting goals by mid-October. They are connected to our district and our school goals. And also, they're, they're looked at a lot more specifically to, where are you right now in your teaching? Where do you need to be in your teaching? What have you been thinking about in regards to your own teaching? And the previous plan, it was sort of a one-size-fits-all, we're all going to do this, and, you know, but we have teachers who are, you know, been around for 25 years and are in a different place in their teaching than our second-year teachers. So that allows for a lot more conversation, and for the teachers to be like, "This is what I need right now to improve my practice, and improve my practice with the students I'm seeing in front of me this year." They choose a focus indicator from the Danielson framework, and we follow everything through a theory of action, and you see that these are also reflected in our district goals. So if I do this, then I expect this to happen as measured by this. And the focus is always on student achievement. But the interesting part about what, how they change is, is the student achievement needs to be looked at both quantitatively and qualitatively. So it's not just about data and numbers and numbers. It's also about the qualitative experience of students in the classroom, that you might get responses through feedback and through surveys. And that way, they're saying, "They're just as important to your teaching as it is, how well did they do on this test? How engaged are the kids in the class? How much are they, you know, showing up to be part of discussions?" Some things that are not always reflected in test scores, but we know are actually the harbingers of more success in academics and in life. So we continue that goal-setting thing. I already jumped the gun, jumped the gun on quantitative and qualitative. And this was a mind shift in our goal-setting, and we're still working with that. We had been doing it all being very quantitative for the last 15 years, and to really sort of push teachers to think about whole trial, that how their entire experience in the classroom is important, and not just how they're doing on a test. They, teachers choose at least three learning activities to sort of improve their practice. They could be things like going to visit other classes. It could be going to workshops. It could be reading books or articles, being in collaborative sessions, and that's part of a timeline that is worked on with the evaluator and the teachers. Teachers can work individually, or they can work in a small group on a goal. Sometimes what we find is, teachers are working on similar goals, so it's better for them to work together than they have like a book club group. I know that's happening right now at the elementary with some of the science of reading work. They're doing a lot of work together on that, so they're reading articles together and discussing it. And goals can also be multi-year. They don't need to get everything done by one year. It could be an extension, saying, "No, I want to work on this for the next one, two, or three years." And that's part of the legislation came down with that. In mid-February, by mid-February, evaluators meet with the teachers to check on their progress, talk through, "How can I even better support you?" They share artifacts to show their progress, and we do all this in Google Classroom as our, you know, sort of our storehouse for it. And at the end of the year, there's a narrative reflection on goal achievement. Before, it was very much like, did your, 75% of your kids meet this goal on this thing? Now, it's very much like, they have to look back on not just test scores, but they have to look at their own planning and preparation, the learning environment they set up for kids, the experiences overall, and also principal teaching, which has a lot to do with, what role do you play in this community of educators? So it also expands out how, teachers don't, shouldn't just close their doors and do what they need. It's, we're all part of a big educational community, and that's what this is really about. And we also look at the end of the year, how the experiences from this year are going to form next year's goal. It used to be like, we closed the door on '23, '24, and we started again on '24, '25. What we did last year is we're like, "Okay, what'd you learn this year? What do you want to think about over the summer and as we go into the fall?" So it really has helped sort of bridge year to year also. Observations. So there are two cohorts. So on the left-hand side, you see the way we define cohort one is anybody who's new to the profession at all, so years 1 to 4, as a teacher. Or if you've been tenured in another district and you're new to Monroe, you have the first two years, you're part of cohort one. And that, that sort of reflects our tenure, the tenure track in our district and in all districts. And one reason why we wanted to do that one scheduled is teachers being able to tie that scheduled informal to one of their goals or something they want to do on their timeline of activities. So a lot of what's happened is when teachers set up, hey, I really want to work on engaging lessons or getting more kids to talk about it, can you come in and watch me teach and give me feedback on that element of it? So it's much more tied, it's not sort of a gotcha, but it's more of a coaching partnership idea. Cohort two, if you've successfully completed cohort one, it is at least two informals, so one unscheduled and one scheduled again. Important here is it says at least, you know, that is, that's the minimum. And the goal is really to get into people's classrooms more often than not. To that end, we've really been talking a lot with administrators and teachers about observations, walkthroughs and drop-ins. And, you know, we sort of have a plan. Every teacher knows when it's like considered an informal observation, when it's a drop-in informal observation. It could be that, like for my teachers that I evaluate, they know when I have my iPad and I got my pad, you know, this is an informal observation. It could just be a drop-in. And we talk to teachers about, you know, drop-ins happen for a lot of reasons. It might be that we just want to see you fly in action. It might be a little, it might be less about the teacher and more about what's happening there curricularly. It could be a behavioral thing. Administrators come in to sort of see how some kids are working together and it's really not about the teacher, it's about that. And also, so feedback to teachers will depend. So we've really made, we're trying to make that really the norm. Open doors, we're going to visit everybody's classroom often because as it says, daily practice is what matters. That's what's really the, what we used to call, I don't want to say the dog and pony show, but I'm getting evaluated twice a year and that's it. You know, those sort of, that structure did not lead to as much growth as, hey, this continual improvement process. Feedback structured, like I said, in these four areas, which are the Danielson framework domains, planning and preparation, learning environments, learning experiences and principal teaching. So everything when we're giving feedback is about one of those four domains. So we really ground our conversations in that. There are growth criteria. In the old days of ratings and the numbers and the one, two, three, four, the legislation changed. Research showed that one, two, three, four wasn't making very much any difference at all, that I think it was ninety-something percent of all teachers in Connecticut were fours. So what was the conversation that was happening? And when you want to have a conversation with somebody, it was more about the number than it was really about the process and the growth. So what we're talking about now is that reflection is part of this and that you're determined to have successfully completed teacher evaluation plan for the year if you show reflection with evidence of the impact that your learning did on their practice or goal. So the idea that it doesn't matter if you're a thirty-two-year veteran, you're still working on improving your practice and how did you improve your practice this year? And how did it impact students and learning? The impact the educators new learning and practice had on student learning, growth and achievement. And then next steps, also that they talked about next steps, that it's always this growth cycle, that's really important in the reflection, that it's not, like I said before, we're good, I'm good, check it off. It's like, oh, no, now what? You know, that's what education's all about, is the now what. New to this is before, when there was an issue with a teacher, it would often go to a corrective support plan immediately. Corrective support plans still exist, but what they have added by legislation is tier threes of advancing support. And the same way that with students, we have tier threes of support, we have that also now, also if there is a pattern of persistent lack of growth and reflection or resistance to growth-oriented feedback. So the idea that if we have teachers who are not interested in growing in the direction that we want to go, we have some tiers of advancing support. If those three tiers, which might include, hey, we're going to have somebody else, you know, come in and give you feedback, we want you to go watch teacher A and teacher B and see, hey, let's take a look at this lesson plan. If it's still not working after those, you know, those supports are raised, then we do have the opportunity to go to a corrective support plan as we have in the past. And that has not changed.
How long would that last?
It's different. I mean, it, there are no specific timeframes that the legislature gave you. You've set that timeframe up with your evaluator. So obviously, depending upon what the concern is, it might be a little bit of a shorter time. Certainly, we want to keep it short enough so that it doesn't take so long because the old days, it took much longer to get the corrective support plan even. So the idea from the state is, hey, make those reasonable so that you can move people along. But there is no hard and fast rule to it because some of it might be curricular, you know, some of it might be really instructional and like behavior management in the classroom, that you need to see something immediately happening or else there's going to be, you know, other issues. So there is no set timeframe for it. Like I said, all documents are housed in the Google Classroom. And the nice thing about this, our old platform was incredibly confusing and there were so many different documents that teachers had to use. Now we've put it all, that, teachers only have one document to work on all year and so they can do all their work on that one document. And then also the evaluator's feedback will all be on one document. So we started this last year, worked out very well. So we have really great documentation at the end of the year, too. Every teacher has about like a ten-page document that is placed in their, you know, personnel file that really shows their growth, their goal-setting and the feedback they received during the year. Leader evaluation support plan, one of the most important changes in this legislation is they wanted to make sure the leader evaluation plan was really reflective of the teacher one, that we're all sort of in the same process and that leaders, administrators have the same growth expectations. They reflect the teacher plan. We have the same goal-setting and timeframes as the teachers. Our guiding document is the CT Leader Evaluation Support Rubric. And those are the four areas there that we have to make our goals in. And we also have a tiered support and corrective action plan in the same way that teachers do. And that's, that's a new addition to it. We have a cohort, the same way our years are a little different. It's new to a leadership role, so even, you know, from a principal to an assistant principal, because of the change in role, they're considered still in cohort one, even if they've been in the district for a long time. And anybody who's new to the district their first three years. And so we don't have observe, evaluation, like classroom observations, we do professional practice and our site visits. So we'll go in and watch a faculty meeting or a department meeting or something where we're watching them do some professional development. And that's what their site visit will be about. And then when you move over to cohort two, you have two observations of professional practice in site visits. Those are minimums again, just like with teachers. And we try to be with, you know, give feedback all the time, you know, as a team, as an admin team. And that's, that's really, that's, that's the plan. So what, because it's not a policy, it's just we need approval also, but any questions about?
I had one, Mike.
Sure.
So when you talk about goal-setting, you talked about the quantitative versus qualitative. Obviously, quantitative is, it's, you know.
Yeah.
But when, I guess, is this, is the qualitative piece of this, is it student feedback only?
It could be student feedback. It could be even pieces like, I mean, it is quantitative, it's in the Venn diagram world, but like if you're saying, I have this really quiet group of kids this year and I can't get them to engage in discourse, so my goal is really to build discourse. So I'm going to start to do like, can I get eighty-five percent of the kids to discuss deeply during a class? So you might start to take, you might videotape your class and then literally do like a hash and be like, yeah, I got seventy-five, okay, I want to move up to this, like that kind of quality. Like, how do you address engagement? You know, it might be something about getting community involvement also, like getting families to respond. I can't get families to respond, what is that, you know, can I get survey information about things going back to it? Is it something about ruler? And we're looking at, you know, ruler and SEL and how we can utilize qualitative data in that way. So, yeah, it's, that's why I said that's sort of a, it's a mind shift, it's a paradigm shift. And it's a hard one, too, because all data is quantitative, but it's that sort of, that piece. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, to this point, it's very subjective, right?
Yep.
So the evaluation process is long to begin with. Is there any opportunity for AI in this?
Yeah, and absolutely. And I think when we talked about teachers utilizing AI to help build goals also, it's a really helpful thing. You know, like utilize AI build goals. Give yourself a timeline, put myself a timeline, these are the things I want to do, these are the dates that we have available, give myself a timeline. That would be, that's a great use of AI for it. You know, give yourselves, AI can build surveys for students. You know what I mean? You could do a survey through School AI, you know, the new program we have, sit down with students and get, you could actually give them prompts about what's happening in class and you could have that feedback. And actually, School AI does a beautiful thing where it actually rates the feedback you get as a smiley face, anger, all that. So you could actually use that. Thank you.
Just the evaluation process is general.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, they do need board approval on this. So can I have a motion to approve the teacher evaluation plan as presented? Dennis? Second, Greg? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move forward. We have a contract to discuss with an executive session. Can I have a motion that the Board of Education hereby moves into executive session to discuss the compensation terms of the superintendent's contract in accordance with Connecticut General